That's a beautiful color, yes.
It turned out really well.
Is that yours?
I could bring the meeting to order, please. I will go ahead and start with a public comment. If anybody wishes to address the board, raise your hand. I'll recognize you. You've come to the podium, faces. Tell us what it is you need. And I'll go from there. Do we have any takers? Okay. In that case, we're going to move ahead to the TC... I'm sorry. Town Center Project Presentation and Discussion, AKA TCVC meeting. Who's leading that?
Bob is leading that. So the firm that we hired is LaValle Road Singer and Bob Robichek. It is Assistant. Kim will be doing the presentation for us.
Is that more coffee? So can you hand some?
We brought 14 to 15. That's what I was asked to bring. Probably not enough for everybody.
You should have so. Would you get one?
I think so.
What I could do is actually design first and then pass. Otherwise, people would just be going through them as though...
Like I'm doing right now?
Exactly. If you're doing right now.
I'll leave these up here.
Yeah. I prefer, actually, if we can actually go through it first. Otherwise, you just be right through it. All right. Whatever the audience, they can see.
We can have that way. We can have that way.
Let's go this way.
Can you guys see that? You see what that mine? Yes.
That's good. That's good.
So I'm going to... I'm sorry. I don't want to block anybody's view to South Carolina.
Whoops.
So... Exactly. Right. Work is calm. Anyway, my name is Bob Robichek. I'm the principal and studio leader for Civic with LaValle Road Singer. We worked with TCVC and so did town staff, starting roughly around after Labor Day, I believe. Late August of Labor Day. We went through a process... I'm going to do a little preamble for folks in the audience, just because to kind of get us to where we are and why we're here tonight. So as you guys, as you folks know, there's been many other studies done in the past. Some of them in the very recent past. Well, first of all, Kim, you didn't introduce yourself. Kim McCarthy.
Kim McCarthy.
So Kim works in our Civic Studio. She fills me who were here a week ago Monday, met Kim. My other cohort, Kathy Porter, could not be here tonight. She had a personal commitment really to the holidays if she could be here. So when we were brought on board and we didn't sort of know the whole history of what had happened in prior five or 10 years, there had been a lot of studies that had been done by prior efforts, and none of them sort of seemed to really move forward beyond the study. That included studies from the library or other town functions that were going to be on this campus. So when we were retained to work on this project, one of the things that we understood was that we have to work very closely to make sure that whatever was being put forth by our client, TCVC, in the town of Lee, was going to be sellable to the community and that the various groups that are involved in this project, town administration staff, the historical society, the library, were all going to be accommodated the best as possible. However, in doing so, within a budgetary constraints of what we were charged with, within the parameters. And I think that it's easy to be an architect working with a limitless money printing machine. Almost anybody can do some great stuff if you got no, you know, basically no limit to your budget. And also, the site had a lot of, we'll talk about that in a minute, had a lot of items that sort of factors that impinged on the site itself and where things might go. And I'll talk about that in a minute. We started in, I believe, Julie, it was like right after Labor Day, wasn't it? Roughly, right around that time? And the first things that we did, I want to bring a background to why we're here now, where we are in the process. So we started out by doing a existing conditions report, which has been completed. They looked at the buildings that were involved in this, in the study. You all know what they are, so I'm not going to go through them more than them. We then concurrently with that did a programming effort that took, whoops, that took about approximately four weeks or so. And we met with various city, town departments, asked about their space needs, looked at what they have now, what they would need in the future. We looked 20 years out to 2035 and roughly, and really tried to understand what they have now and what they would need reasonably so in the, in the next 20 years. And that applied to the library, to the town hall functions, and also some of the committees, like Historical Commission and others like that, that had some stake in the process. So once we got the program together, we went through a couple of different iterations of that program, because we had to cut it back here and there to sort of bring it back within the realm of where the budget for the overall project would be. Because what we did very early on, again, a lot of architectural firms or design firms will do a program because it's a needs assessment, right? But they, it becomes an idealized document, and then you go to design a building or buildings based on that. And the first thing out of the box, when you go into schematic design, is that you're over the budget. Well, that's because the program has got a certain size, and every square foot costs money. Okay? We actually did something that we do early on. We worked with TCVC on this. We cost-loaded the program early on based on some budgetary information that we got from our cost estimating consultant, who does work in somewhere like 30 municipalities, like yours in New Hampshire. So he knows, he really knows this stuff. And then we came up with some numbers. And then those numbers were further polished with working with TCVC. So when we came out of the box to start doing the conceptual planning that we did, we already had a pretty understanding of what the budget would support in terms of the program or what that program would mean in dollars and cents. Okay? What we're doing, so then what we did is took that program and we started doing a conceptual site layout. We went through multiple iterations of trying to fit the pieces on the site and decide how the parking might work, how much parking was needed, where these buildings might be relocated to the historical society and the annex, where the municipal building should be located, the new building, how the library addition would play in, because as you'll see in a minute, there's additions and for future additions that we've taken account. So we went through a very detailed process to come up with the site plan that you're going to see, working with our civil engineers with TCVC. Bless you. And also, and also the New Hampshire Department of Transportation local road agent as well, because we had taken account the various parameters of the site. Once we came up with that site, which has only been like about three weeks ago, I think, that we finally nailed that layout down, we moved on with doing the, some test fits, using bubble diagrams, so spatial diagrams, that represented the various parts of the space that we were taking out of the program. Okay? So we did about four iterations of those, and then we met with TCVC, actually, last Monday, I believe, we met. And then from that point on, the amount of work that was, anybody on TCVC was there is going to be, I think, surprised. We did a tremendous amount of work since then, thanks to Kim and a few other, Selma and a few other people that really put a lot of hours into it. What we're doing at this point is not schematic design. It's not design documents for construction. This is a conceptual study to basically sniff test that what is being planned for the municipal building, a library addition, and site work fits within the space, fits within the budget. Nothing that we're going to show and nothing that's going to go into the eventual warrant article are set in stone, because once the warrant article would pass, our actual design process would take in these documents, moving them forward, would be what would happen. Okay? So nothing here is cast in stone. Nobody's digging a hole in the ground tomorrow, starting to build from these drawings or from these renderings. A couple more things I want to get into the actual presentation. Where we are right now is about 90% complete with our work. We're going to be 100% complete ideally a week from this Friday, prior to Christmas, because right after the first of the year, we're going into the community presentation on the 7th, and then the other presentations that are actually on the postcard that you're going to send out. So we really have to be, we're going to be done with this by, by a week from Friday, hopefully. And then we'll craft, using these PowerPoint slides, we'll craft a presentation with TCVC as to what's going to be actually presented. Okay? Everybody with me so far? So, next, please. So I know your project is a little bit out of focus, and that happened the last time we were here, it's a little bit out of focus, but this, this is Mast Road. This is Wednesday Hill Road. Again, I'm going to give you, you know, a 100-foot level. We could be here for 20 hours discussing this. So I'm going to hit some highlights on this. But basically, we did a lot of different site layouts that had all kinds of different positions of these buildings. And this is what was the final decision that was made. So I'm going to walk you through it. This is Mast Road. This is the current town hall and the whole shed right here, tram shed. This is the current library. The existing annex is right here, and the historical society is over here. Okay? So what this design approach does, because it's conceptual design, this is about a, the detailed engineering conceptual plan that you're going to get in this kind of study. But basically, well, we have a driveway here right close to where the current driveway is right now. Okay? There's parking for town hall. There's parking for a library and expansion. There's a connection right here that connects to Wednesday Hill Road, out of, out of this parking lot to Mast Road. That's something that John Tappan and I, and I, who else was there? Are you there? We met with them and our civil engineer. We went through all that process, and this is something that was, that was in keeping with the New Hampshire DLT. So this gives you a circulation and go through the site. In this, in the final site plan, the library addition is right here. What you see in the dotted line right here is a future possible expansion. So as we laid the site out, we had taken account not just what was going to be built right away, but what would be built possibly 20 years from now, when another addition of about 2,000 square feet might be built. The municipal building has a parking lot sort of to itself, so to speak, because we wanted to make sure that the parking was dispersed enough that you could easily find parking at each one of these functions. Okay? And also, the parking counts, you can't read them here, but the parking counts were arrived at with a, with a planning and zoning, and there's more than enough adequate parking, because none of these buildings will be used 100% capacity at any given time. Municipal building is here. It's allowed in its siding for an expansion in the future, either to this side towards the church or to the back. The current wetland setback is right here, so everything is the other side of that, with the exception of the part of the library that already does not meet that. Okay? That's a grandfather situation. The annex would move over here, and the historical society over here, forming another piece of the campus. So this forms a nice sort of campus situation. In the future, if they wanted to be a connection to the church or klot, you could do that as well in the future, if you, if that's desirable, but it's not on the table at the moment. Okay? Next, please. So this is a, so originally, when we were hired, part of the fee in a proposal was to do a kind of a cardboard model or something like that. And we spoke to TCVC and said, you know, we can do computer modeling that's going to be way more advantageous to you in selling, to the community, than doing some little, you know, boxes that'll be by the size of a honey jar right here. So what you're going to see, a lot of things that we did are using Revit and other tools that are related to Revit that render up the images that we did. So everything we did is three-dimensional modeling. Okay? So this is kind of a pretty version of the engineering site plan, and this shows basically the same layout, right, Kim? And basically, it shows the town hall and the garage, the tram shed. It shows the library and the addition. It shows the parking, the municipal building, the annex, and the historical society. So you get a little bit of a feeling of how that space works. The frontages, actually, the cut, the curb cut here is about this big right now. Okay? So this brings it more in scale. That was something that came out of our conversations with New Hampshire DOT. But it's a really nice flow. So, next, please. So because this is a three-dimensional model, okay? We're able to rotate it and create different views. This is basically a bird's eye view. Wednesday Hill Road would be right here. This is Mast Road. This is the current town hall and the tram shed, current existing historical school building, and this is a library addition. And this is the municipal building. And then these are relocated buildings that are currently here and roughly here. One of the things that we looked at when we, as we go through this presentation, which is maybe another 15 minutes tops, is that we wanted to be contextual to your town in terms of the architecture, but we're not trying to recreate some historical design. Okay? So this, in doing so, the scale of the buildings, the roof shapes, the siding, some of the things that are familiar to the community, we try to capture that in what we did. Okay? Next. This is the same thing looking from the other direction. Again, Wednesday Hill Road would be here. This is Mast, town hall, tram shed, historical school building and all the additions, library addition, municipal building, and then the annex and the historical society. This is the annex right there. So this gives you a feeling for what that composition starts to look like as a whole. Okay? Next, please. So we took the program that we had, and we did about four or five different diagram, bubble diagram test fits. Honestly, the plan could go 100 different directions, okay? And I'm not going to dwell on this, because this could be further designed, this schematic design, once it becomes a warrant article and it passes. But we have to take that 4,850 square foot roughly program and make sure it's fit into the box that we had. Okay? Which is about 48 feet this way by about 100 feet this way. I'm just going to spend a few minutes on this, because this could be done 10 other ways in the future. But basically, this color is a common public areas, which include a vestibule, public toilets, a lobby, a larger conference room. The yellow is the town administration functions. The gray are the support functions. The blue is zoning and planning, planning and zoning. And the sort of greenish color is the clerks. We tried to implement as much of the program as we could. We worked predominantly, almost exclusively, with TCVC on those layouts. We met last week, and we selected this option with further development last Monday. One of the key things, though, about this, okay, which is beyond where a door is or where that is, is three key things. One is that out of this public lobby, the program told us we needed to have three points of service. One to the town administrator through her secretary, one to the zoning and planning, and one to the clerks, which goes to our consultation room like it, it's like, God, it is now, basically. And also, if they can account that could be future addition either back here or to this side right here, if you think about the plan, right? The site plan. If you go back for a second, Kim, to, you know, the engineering plan, that's the last one. Okay? So it took an account that we had to count for these kinds of things to happen. So how we at least lay the building out, you know, had to take that into account. We couldn't just footstop everywhere we wanted it without taking into account. So you can go back to that plan. Kim, please. So at least conceptually, this allows for connection in the future. It allows for connection here. It's a compact footprint. We put furniture in there and make sure it worked. Again, this for us was a test fit, to make sure everything really fits in a building. You can move stuff around from now until next June, but you had to make sure it fit inside that envelope. Next, please. So this is a bird's eye extonometric view of that. It just kind of gives you a little bit of a feel for the space. This helps us do a little bit when we, when we do our planning, to make sure. And that's another reason that we actually put furniture in that plan, to make sure that the offices actually work, that the spaces actually work, regardless of where they are in a building. Right, Kim? So, next, please. So this is a view of the municipal building. If you could picture, what I could kind of show you, maybe to help you, is go back to engineering or the hour plan, slide three. And I'm going to show you where the views are taken from. Slide three.
Oh, three.
Yeah. Yeah, this is good. So the views you're going to see are from here, I believe, Kim, and from here, right? And also from the back, right? And then the library view you're going to see is ones from about here, looking this way. The other ones from like, kind of here. So just so you get in your mind when you see these three-dimensional images, where, that snapshots taken from, right? Let's go back to where we were at this. All right. So this one, so this shows one view of it. This is the main entrance. It's very contextual. The scale is nice. The materials are something very familiar to what would be here. Again, we're not trying to recreate some historical, you know, building from 200 years ago. This is something modern, but it's contextual. The scale is really nice to it. The roof shapes are broken out, especially the public side. You see the back is a little plainer. Next, please. This is a view from the other side I just showed you. And this is the, this is the very back, so you probably, you never really see this. Okay? Expansions from this will go out this way in the future or out this way in the back. Okay? So when we laid sort of the plan out, we took into account the fact that we wanted to be able to do this or do that in the future. So we took some, we took a few minutes using the software. Again, this is conceptual only. Nobody's saying the tile's going to be brown or anything like that. This is a conceptual study. But the tools that we're using are very powerful, and they're enabling us to do this, to really explore the space a little bit. So this would be like the lobby. This is the public, the larger conference room. This is the entrance to the private side of the, of the town hall, of the municipal building. This would be a point of service to the, actually, I think it's backwards. This is actually the administrator. Yeah, it's fine. We labeled this at the last minute. And then this would be planning and zoning. The clerks is like this way, towards, towards a table. But we just tried to look at, you know, what the space might look like in real life the best that we could, at a very conceptual level. Okay? Next. Well, that was the last image. One of the things, one of the things I will say about the, if you can go back to any of the exterior views of the municipal building. Any of them? Yeah. The other one's got a better view of the front. All your buildings, we didn't have, we didn't have time to do it. We'll do it for the final. Your current library and your current town hall have a little plaque on the front. It says town hall, library. It would be, we'll have, in the final, we're going to have a little plaque that matches that, say municipal building. And then the library, the one that's on the library, we would move to the library entrance. Okay? The one that says town hall and current town hall would stay there. All right. Thank you, Kim. Thanks. All right. Upwards and onwards, we're going to go to the library. So the library, basically, was an existing space of about 2,900 or so square feet, and the addition's about 3,900 square feet. The expansion would go out this way, as per the engineering conceptual plan. And it really worked out very nicely, because what happens is the current entrance is decommissioned. We don't touch the entrance to the old schoolhouse, which is what the historic piece of the project is. And what happens in the old part of the building is you have predominantly young children, children's area, young adults. And then you have a meeting room that can be used for a multitude of purpose meetings for the library, whether it's larger children's groups, storytelling hour, whatever it is that went to program in that space. So that seats approximately about 70 people. And then there's bathrooms here, new bathrooms that are being built within that space. There's one there now, but these have to be ADA accessible, and a small kitchen at break room. The basements under this building would be, will be used mostly for mechanical and storage and not really programming space. Okay? So the addition then, also, this is little details that I'll mention, but again, I'm trying to keep 100-foot view of all this stuff. We didn't want to touch the corner of the historical building, so actually, in marrying the new addition to this, we stayed off of that corner. That corner would be right here. Okay? So we stayed off of that. The, the new addition features then a new entrance with a larger vestibule, a new handicap ramp. We come into a lobby. There's a browsing area right here. This is the workroom and the circulation desk would have views, as many views as possible. These are low shelving, so views everywhere. And then also through these windows, and also through this opening to the existing building. New bathrooms here, ADA accessible, librarian's office, New Hampshire Collections slash meeting space. This is seating for periodicals. The views out here would be beautiful, because you're looking to the wetlands, so you have nice views of nature to the back of the building. Very open. And then here, you've got the audio collections and then the book stacks right here. These are nothing. These are actually bushes that didn't get taken out. Our computer system showed them as boxes, but they're bushes. Adult collection, general seating for collections, computer use terminals and carols, and then the DVD collection right here. So the space itself actually is reasonably open, and you'll see a couple of images that we did that will really show that. Next, please. So this is the same, sort of, I call this a shoebox view. When you tilt the shoebox, then you can see in. So you can see here all of these we've talked about, the new entrance, the new ramp, vestibule, lobby, circulation desk, workroom, stacks, periodicals. We show kind of a glassy area, this New Hampshire Collections, the seating area here with nice views out back, and then the children's and young adults and a meeting space right there. Okay? Next, please. So this is two views. I think I showed you where they're taken from. This is the views that we took. This is the new entrance, the new handicap ramp. This is the historic old school building right here, and this is the new addition. So you get a feeling by looking at this, how contextual this is in terms of scale and materials and size and roof shapes. You know? We're not trying to copy this, but we're trying to pick up as much of that rhythm and texture as we could. I don't know, Kim, if you want to say a few words about sort of the trim that you show, because you worked with a current library historical building to do that, right?
Yeah. We were just trying to mimic kind of the trim that you already see in the Eve work. The roof pitch is typically the same. Even if everything doesn't wind up being the same height, it's still all proportionate to one another. And with the entrance, we're trying to create a separate element from what you're, so it's not the same... Oh, you can't see my mouse. Sorry. It's not the same repeating detail at the entrance and the two ends of the building.
Right. It's not going to repeat what's here at the historical building, so we might do something totally different. But it's contextual. It also picks up what's happening in the municipal building. So there's some, we repeat that feature other places, so people can understand, this is where the front door is. One of the worst things that an architect can do is go do a building and people don't know where the front door is. Now, it happens all the time. Okay? Next, please. Oh, those were, oh, I'm sorry. Go back a second. Those bushes were the ones that turned up like boxes in the floor plan, just an oversight. Next, please. So this is a view. This is the historical building right here, the schoolhouse. This is the addition, the entrance, the ramp. You get a feel for that. Of course, we would have a sign here saying library, because I, actually, the sign is on this building right now, but I think we'd probably move it to this building. That's up to TCVC. That's just the details. But obviously, it'd be nice to have the sign with the entrance. These are some of the views that we generated. The building was extensive. They couldn't afford books. That's a joke.
We have plenty of books.
Yeah. Exactly. Because Kim was like, we don't have time to put the books. And I'm like, it's okay. She's like, go ahead and write the books. So, but you get a feeling, I think what you get a feeling for is the airiness and lightness of the space that it would be there, and the openness also of this circulation desk. This is the workroom behind. These are low shelving for the periodicals. So you just get a bit of a feel for that. Okay? Next, please. This is a view in adult seating area, right? And looking, looking to the back right here. And again, it just, this would be the wall of the New Hampshire Collection Conference Room. um, conference room, meet, uh, and collection area. So you just get a feeling for the openness of it, again. Always gonna build from these things tomorrow, but this is just a good idea to community of what some of the things that this money's gonna buy, okay? To be quite franked upon, okay? Um, pictures worth a million words, alright? Um, I thought this guy looked way too relaxed here, like, "Oh, I don't know what he's doing in the library, but anyway." Uh, alright, next please. So last but not least, um, we were tasked with looking at the existing town hall, which is gonna be decommissioned into more of a meeting space, a community meeting space, and also used by some commissions as well. So what we did here, um, was, um, I'm just gonna go through really quickly, but I wanna make sure I cover it, is that we have a ramp here and a stair. There's already a ramp and a stair there, but it may have to be upgraded. This is the current town clerk's office, is being turned into commission, shared commission workspace. Um, the archivist, uh, space is right here, that's an open station. There's plenty of room for file cabinets and storage and all that good stuff. Uh, based on seating for approximately seventy-two people, I believe, seventy, seventy-two, seventy-five people, we did a code review, you need two bathrooms that have to be ADA accessible, um, so we do show that. Uh, there is a bathroom here, uh, now, but the idea would be that it may have to be reconfigured, so it meets code better than it does right now. And we also showed a small kitchenette, which was requested by the TCVC, so that if you do have a function in here, you can actually, uh, do something there, or make coffee, or something, okay? So, the current stage is still shown, we show a ramp to that stage, because by code, you really have to have a ramp. Um, and then we show a large storage, uh, space right here, because of all the folding chairs and tables, you can put them in that storage and clear the space out, right? Uh, and then, last but not least, we show a brand-new stair, which actually meets code, that goes to the second floor. The current stair that's there now does not meet code. Um, and the vestibule, we looked at our, with our code person, Kim worked with them. You wanna say a couple words just about what's going on here?
Um, we just kind of simplified the vestibule stair area, so the stair exits right into that, and it essentially becomes your entire vestibule.
Yeah.
Um, and it also shortens the path of travel, um, coming from the second floor down through the first floor, and...
It's like code thing.
Yeah, and the doors swing, all of your doors are swinging in the correct direction now, rather than having to go through the meeting room to come back out. So it was just kind of a simpler idea from what we showed last.
Yeah, right now, right now, there's a little tiny vestibule, behind this vestibule, and it just doesn't work for code and access. Upstairs, um, the stair, the new stair goes up, but we have, uh, some storage. Um, there is no elevator or lift to the second floor of this building. However, as long as there's equal accommodations on the first floor for things like meetings, and toilet rooms, and drinking fountains, et cetera, you could use the upstairs also for some kind of office space, meeting space. It just can't be something that is not offered on the fully accessible first floor, which is fully accessible, okay? So you can call this anything you want, you can call it storage, you can call it, but realistically, you could potentially kind of have almost what's there now, which is another meeting space. I mean, it's got two means of progress, it's fine, okay? You just can't put something up here that isn't accommodated for down here. Does that make sense? Alright. Last but not least, the budget. So, we worked very closely with the TCVC to come up with some numbers that we felt, everybody felt, we felt, our cost estimator felt, and the TCVC felt, was reasonable for the standard of construction that this, again, let's say for the twentieth time, conceptual study was based on, okay? So, we wrote a basis of design document that's about eight pages long, it's just a description of how this thing might be built, because my cost guy had to see that in order to come up with a budget, okay? So, I'm gonna go through this really quickly. Uh, basically, we broke it down by building, okay? And the library just happens to be first. Um, we came up with a budget of fifty dollars a square foot for the basement. And what Mark, Mark and I met twice in my office, Mark Jobin, who's our cost estimator, Jobin LLC, uh, we talked about what, what would be happening in this building, especially the renovation pieces, what would happen in those parts of the buildings, so he could start putting some dollars and cents to a conceptual level budget, okay? So for the basement, we basically had some demolition, interior finishes, some upgrades, the electrical, mechanical, just minor upgrades. To the first floor, we had a hundred dollars a square foot for renovation. So what we, for about this length, square feet, right? So what we had there was some more, some demolition, some interior framing and finishes, like we're doing a new kitchenette, we got a bathroom coming in, things like that. Uh, exterior repairs, we figured we might do some exterior painting, 'cause you're not gonna put a beautiful addition next to a building that hasn't been painted, I'm joking, hasn't been painted in twenty years. So we had some numbers for some exterior painting and repairs, mechanical, electrical upgrades to the current building, okay? The systems in that building would remain, okay? And then, uh, and then, um, and then the GCO had a profit and fees, which are built into everything down the line. That's not ours, that's contractor's dollars. The addition of thirty-nine-hundred square feet, we had a budget of two-hundred-seventy dollars a square foot. And it basically breaks down, as you see right here, I don't have to read all of these, but it breaks down as you see right here. The only thing I'm gonna tell you is the site work. The reason this asterisk is here is in any one of these where you see the site work, like for the municipal building, that's the site work within five feet of the building. That's the way our business world works in design, architecture, construction. What's within five feet of the building is in one budget, and outside of that, in the site development, separate budget, and we'll show you that in a minute. So that's what that, that's what that means, okay? Next please. The historical society is being picked up and moved, we're providing, we, we included a new custom place concrete basement for that, okay? Right now, it's concrete masonry units, so it's, you know, it's an old foundation, it'd be the sixties, right? From the sixties, I think, correct? That basement, yeah. And, and, and we're also reconnecting it to, uh, to electrical power, there's no other really, no other really utilities in that building. Uh, so again, you see the site work number, which is within five feet of the building. We had sixty bucks a foot for that. In the annex, we had fifty-five dollars. Um, the building relocation, uh, we had to basically pick that building up and pour a new foundation and footing for it, reconnect it, including the water, septic, and electric, because that building has a bathroom in it. There were really no numbers for renovating those buildings, it's just to basically move them. The one thing that Mark insisted on saying is that assumes the building structure is sound enough for relocation without major repairs. Now, we looked at those buildings that are not falling down, his concern was more, when you pick them up, what's gonna happen? They talked to, he talked to, uh, two companies that move buildings, he got some good input from them. Again, for conceptual level, this budget is good as you're gonna get, okay? He doesn't want, if we go into this committee design and the Warren article, when it passes, we'll probably, again, look at the moving numbers to make sure, but we're reasonably comfortable with this. Municipal building is about forty-eight-hundred, forty square feet, that's pretty much right on the program. That's that forty-eight by a hundred box that we looked at. It does not have a basement slab on grade, okay? And that number was two-hundred-seventy dollars a foot, so very similar to the library, to seventy. And, I'm not gonna read through all of these, but this is just a breakdown that he, that he did based on the conversations that we had. Um, and, uh, and it included the site work within five feet, and that came to about one-point-three-million dollars. The site development for the whole site, that parking lot, clearing, the grubbing, I love that word, grubbing, the grubbing, here, grub the site, uh, the cuts, the filling, the grading, the, uh, the utilities, the water, the, the septic, electrical and drainage, the parking lot, the walkways, landscaping, we had allowance for landscaping, came out to about four-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars, okay? So the whole number came out to about three-point-three-four-seven million, which is very close to what I believe the TCVC, uh, shared with the, um, the budget committee. Almost identical, I mean, within thousands of dollars. Next please. On top of that, there's a soft cost, which are, we estimated eighteen percent. That includes architectural fees, federal state permitting fees, local fees, geotechnical engineering, test pits, material testing during construction, builder's risk, exterior signage, and we have, uh, reasonable allowance for FFNE, fixtures, furniture, and equipment. Uh, generally, we, you know, that tends to, we usually go anywhere from five-and-a-half, seven percent up to ten percent, probably, but we probably just have enough in there that you could buy new furniture for the town, municipal building. I, I don't think it includes the all-new shelving and everything in the library, you know? Uh, 'cause library stuff is, is pretty, pretty, it lasts forever, but it's more expensive, as you would support, I'm sure. I mean, it's stuff that lasts for a hundred years, actually. So, the soft costs were this, so adding those to the hard construction over three-point-nine-five, um, we noticed that TCVC carry a ten percent contingency, which would be a design and construction contingency perhaps, so we did add that contingency in. And with a contingency, it's this much, but then, without that, it's, it's up to four million. Uh, and that's right in line with what the TCVC budget, I think, was, that was presented to the, um, budget committee. Very close. Um, the town hall renovation, we carried about a hundred dollars a square foot for that. Uh, that includes some exterior repairs, the floor structure in that building needs work, especially if you're gonna put a meeting space on top of it. Um, I think, I've been in that building long enough, and, uh, many times, and I know in our report that we did indicates that, conditions report. Um, some interior finish work that has to be done to both the bathrooms and the kitchenette, uh, handicap accessibility, uh, mechanical system upgrades, but most of the ones that were there would stay. Uh, and then the same thing that you saw before. There's no site work here, because we're not really changing anything with a, with a site. So with that, I think that's the end of my presentation. Uh, it's a lot of stuff to cover, again, I try to give you kind of a hundred-foot, um, view of it. Our intent is to complete our work by a week from Friday, so that we can work then with the TCVC on what images you do wanna put in the community presentations. Um, I'm gonna sit down and let the TCVC field any questions. And there are copies of that, maybe they've made their way around already, I don't know. There's a, there's not one for everybody, but there's probably ten more copies that we can share.
Bob? I have a question about the town hall.
Yeah.
Um, if there was not a stage there, and if there was not stairs to the upstairs, how many people could you do that conference?
Would fit in there?
Would fit in there, without the staircase and without the...
The stage.
The stage. Can you have an idea?
Um, you know, we're about, we're about, can you read? I can't read what that says, um, seventy-two?
You said seventy-two or...
Seventy-two. I would say you go up to a hundred.
Okay. I just wanted to understand the difference there.
Because, yeah, because if I'm gonna get up, just said, "I'm gonna get up." If you can imagine, it looks to me visually, that you can get two more, it's rose in here, right?
Okay.
Sort of.
Right.
So that would get you close to a hundred. Now, then my, uh, we had to look at that, um, for code purposes, because when I, we had our code guy look at the number of bathrooms, we used the number of eighty, which was more than a seventy-two.
Right.
So it might be that could trigger something, but I can't tell you for sure.
Okay, well, I just wanted a feeling if we go ahead, people talk about what they wanna do with that, 'cause we knew that the stage was not something we really had made a decision on.
And as far as that stair that goes up, that, you know, that's another thing. You, we're not doing a kind of renovation to this building that would trigger a certain percentage of replacement cost, which would require that the entire building brought up to code, to ADAD code. Accessibility, it's not a code, it's a law. Um, we're not really there, but we felt like, again, this is kind of separate off the balance sheet project, that it would behoove the town to put a real compliance, compliance there or there. Do you absolutely have to? Hell, not really. You know what I mean, but, yeah.
Are you talking inside stair or outside stair?
It's inside, it's inside, inside.
Would the outside stair remain?
Yes, correct.
That would be the second exit, right?
Yes, correct.
Kim, could you go further toward the end? Um, one more, this one. One thing, just that, um, this is more of the select board's initiative, I guess. Um, we, when Bob was talking about the numbers, this, the town hall renovation was kind of separate. And some of you are probably wondering, "Well, what the heck are you gonna do with the town hall?" Well, we're gonna renovate it. But the problem is, or not the problem, the opportunity is, you can get grants for that particular building, it is in, on the state's, uh, register of historic places. So you're eligible for LTR grants, all kinds of different things. We talked to the people who award those grants, and if we were to include this particular thing in the whole project as a total thing, um, their tact was, "Well, why are you coming to us for grant money when you already got funding for it?" And they're like, they probably wouldn't fund it. So the tact that the board is taking is, it's separate from the total project, the idea is to put some money away in a capital reserve fund for two years. Uh, the total is about two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, probably might be a little bit more. But put money away, and then after the first year, we put money away, we've shown the grantee that we're committed to doing this particular project, and then they're most likely gonna fund that particular project, and then guarantee it, but most likely. Um, so then, uh, when the rest of this stuff is all done, because we gotta get the people out of this part of the building, then we can go ahead and do the renovation project. So two years, put some money away, save for it, and then renovate the whole thing.
So, that's, that's why we broke it totally below that line, um, because we didn't wanna include it in the basement yet.
No, we want a whole system for the view, so I agree.
Yeah.
I have a question, you come on. So the, I noticed that just about everything exists in the music, in the municipal building, so the annex right now had a planning board in it, but there are...
They, they moved to this building, and then the annex, ideally...
What's the annex?
Long-term, originally, when we started the process, I'll just tell you my view of it, this is not the TCVC's view. My understanding, our understanding, was that the historical society might eventually use that. Uh, they have a lot of school tours and school buses that come, and, and they have some office needs that came out of the programming efforts that we did. And, and they're building there right now, which is basically the historical, you know, baggage shed, um, doesn't have a bathroom, doesn't have, doesn't have running wires, doesn't have anything, other electricity, really. So that was sort of the long-term plan. I, our understanding was, not what the town decides to do with that, that's up to you folks, but that, that was the intent. And that's another reason why those two buildings are together.
Right, that's following a question, that I noticed is a basement of historical, or history buildings, if you wanna call it that.
Why? Why is there a basement?
Yeah.
'Cause we were, uh, to understand that we should provide a basement for it for storage. They don't have enough storage, and they use that basement also as storage, yeah, so that was the reason why.
And that's why the annex is on the slide?
The annex is on the slide, right. There is no basement.
Annex is on a slide, Alex.
Yep.
And in terms of your question, in terms of the annex, yeah, we as a town, you decide what we're doing in that building.
Yeah.
There's been various talk in terms of what to do with that particular structure. Do we use it, do we put people in it? Uh, it was originally the firehouse, you bring it down to a, to a apartment, it becomes a garage. This is actually set up for a garage, but we could do anything we want with it, right? This program, uh, this proposal just moves it, and then puts the utilities back into it, and that's it.
You know?
We can do whatever we want, and we cannot have a controlled burn. Don't keep trying to burn down buildings.
Have some kind of fun in town.
Fire, fire chiefs, keep selling, and no, we don't do that, we don't do that, we don't do that.
And the municipal building, is that, you said that was a slab as well?
Yeah, the slab on grade, there's no reason to have a basement or anything, um, and then, and quite frankly, there was, we talked a lot, the TCVC members in here that have been part of those meetings, that's, of, you know, you could do a basement under it, but, but then, there are a couple things happen. One, basement's a lot more money, 'cause you're gonna cost seventy bucks or more a foot to build it. Then, you gotta put a stair down to it, or two stairs down to it, now you're losing floor space, so you're losing efficiency. And so the decision was made, actually very early on, not to put a basement under the municipal building. Now, having said that, and the programming, uh, staff was very clear about the storage needs and filing needs. And we provided more than adequate filing, you know, space and, and planning zoning, has filing a workroom, the clerks has a fireproof vault, not a little vault, but a vault. Um, I think it's ten by ten, nine by ten, uh, that'll be fireproof. Again, this is conceptual. Again, this is conceptual, but it's there, plus, so there's, all of the things we're taking into account, but once you put another story on, whether it's up or down, you've got stairs in it, and you gotta, you lose a lot of efficiency, and square footage is money.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Yeah, she's at her hand up for a while.
Yes, thank you. Barb Wackup from the Lee Energy Committee in town. I noticed that the orientation of the municipal building is east-west rather than north-south. Have you considered that we're, we're particularly interested in having solar and possibly putting solar on the roof of that building? Is that under consideration at all?
I'll let the TCBC address it, because we went up and down with that, so...
You wanna do it?
I think I know why we...
Go ahead.
So we've, we've talked about it, to generate power on that site, which isn't a very high net consumer, electricity, would involve selling electricity back to the grid, and then we would get a credit here in a building that uses a lot of power. So from our understanding, it would be better to have solar here, so it doesn't re-enter the grid, have money taken out of it essentially, and then shift over to this site where we consume more. It's better to have the production at the same place as the consumption, we don't lose something that transfers to the grid. Is that right?
Yep, that's right.
I would, I would like to argue that, that, while I, I can see that point, there's a lot of questions about whether this site can even support solar, and, and so I, I wouldn't assume that that's the way it should go. And why is, why wouldn't it be simpler to think about just reorienting the building so that if we decide we need, need to use that building for solar, it's already done? Because it doesn't look to me like there's might be site for a ground solar array on that site.
We worked with, well, they have a program out, what it's called, but they did some calculations in terms of changing the orientation of the building, and there wasn't really that much difference from their program. No?
That's for the, that's for the passive solar.
Passive solar.
Sorry.
But not for solar panels?
Not for solar.
The reason is, the Select Board has already said that they don't wanna put panels on building roofs.
That's right.
And so, there's no plans to put panels on building roofs. Then, there's, and Fire Chief doesn't want panels on building roofs, town building roofs. As Scott mentioned, LBA did do an assessment of, if you rotate the building, how much of a difference does it make in heating costs? And from best orientation to worst orientation, there's about a three and a half percent difference. So three and a half percent difference isn't worth doing, making a change for an orientation.
Well, I wanna, I wanna add something on the solar project. We took a trip to Elliott, Maine, two weeks ago, roughly. Elliott, Maine, at the transfer station has installed a very large solar array that was built after they did a small array on top of one of the buildings, and they saw what the payback was on that, they decided to go ahead and build a larger ray at the transfer station, but it is for powering the town municipal building, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know how far that distance is, but they said that they were very, very pleased with the outcome of, of the amount of credit they generate versus, versus the bill. So, I've asked the Energy Commission to look further with Elliott on that, and so on, and maybe look at the numbers again, and then come back to the Select Board, or the TCBC, or whatever, and maybe we revisit, yes, how do we do, what's the best way to go about the solar project, so...
Another thing that Jim Banks brought up, Jim Banks is a person with tons of knowledge of electricity, one of the things he brought to our attention is, the, part of the town's buildings are on the co-op, and part of the town's buildings are on ever source. And if this project came to fruition, there is co-op power at the church, and if, when we did this project, if we pulled power from the church side, then we can get all of our buildings on the co-op, so we'd have one provider. So if we did an array, or whatever, they'd all be on the same thing, so we do take advantage of the net metering issues, but that's something that we should probably consider. Also, the church has three-phase power, so for the new municipal building, that would be a plus for us. So that's something to consider. It's a little bit additional cost, but the power is right there at the, at the edge of the property, so...
Any more questions? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I didn't get the amount for the library. How much is that gonna be?
If we go back one slider, two slides. So, the, the library was three pieces, right? One was the, so it totals out to one point four two four million, right? That's without the contingency, and without the soft cost, because theoretically, this is hard construction only, okay? So how that played out, and this value was the most complex multi-layered cake, right, was that you have a current existing basement of about seventeen hundred feet, which is gonna be decommissioned. Right now, there's programs being run in the basement, there will be decommissioned to be storage and mechanical space, right? First floor would be renovated, it's about twenty-eight-hundred-sixty-seven square feet. We had a dollar figure of a hundred dollars a foot broken down, as you see, so that was about another, say, three-hundred-thousand dollars to round it. And then the new addition, which was thirty-nine-hundred square feet, was a two-hundred-seventy dollars a foot, right? So the total project cost came out to about one point two four million dollars. Now, that's not including the contingency or the, or the soft costs.
That's one point four two four.
Yeah, four two four, what did I say, I'm sorry.
You said about two-hundred-thousand less.
Oh, one point four two four, I thought twice, almost forgot. It's a long, it's been a long day.
Chuck?
Yeah, I'm just wondering on the construction here, you know, what is the energy level that we're working at? I know there's different standards here, and the glazing, and the insulation, and everything else, you know, what level are we, we looking at? I think if we're talking three percent difference in the orientation of the building, it must be a tight building.
It is, so, so that's a good question. So again, I gotta say for the twenty-first time, this is conceptual design, but we have to notice for our estimator to be able to run some numbers, we have to provide some idea of what it would be. So in New Hampshire, you've got a couple of key things. One is the New Hampshire Energy Code, that you gotta meet that, okay? And also, that's based on the ASHRAE ninety-point-one, so this, these are pretty tight buildings, yes. They would have high insulation values, pretty tight buildings, you know? Again, for the budget that the town can afford, because you could design something that could be a hundred dollars more a square foot, that would be a net zero, you know, example, you could put in a magazine, but the town's budget doesn't really allow for that. But yes, that's a good question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, one question on that energy code, because I understand New Hampshire's a bit behind other New England states on energy code. Which year are you talking about?
It was one of the current codes, that's what we looked at.
Two thousand nine.
Two thousand nine, yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, some of the states are moving to two thousand and eighteen, so...
We just did for once there, and right now, we couldn't take into account something that doesn't, hasn't been passed, or, we don't, we don't, and again, this is not even a design, conceptual study, but we're not gonna base it on something that doesn't, hasn't been adopted, right?
Right, although there is some chance that two thousand and fifteen will be adopted by New Hampshire.
Sure. I mean, whatever we, whatever we show as a conceptual base of design is a tight, energy-efficient building, right? So, it meets the ASHRAE, it meets the energy code, and also IBC? IBC is very stringent. The new IBC.
Isn't one of the things that was brought up when we were talking about just the size of this building, and then making a lot of the changes that you might, may make to a building two or three times the size to get energy efficiency?
Yeah.
Wouldn't have the same return on the dollar spent on this building?
It's absolutely true, I mean, this, when you look at these, these buildings, the library addition, the new municipal building, these are reasonably relatively modest small buildings. So, you know, unless the town wanted, and this is something you guys, it's nothing to do with us, we'll do whatever you want. We're, we're doing stuff at Bowden that's, you know, net zero, but Bowden spending money like sailor on leave, you know, don't, don't put that in the minutes, please. So, so what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is that those buildings are being, like, designed like passive house, net zero, it's not, these buildings are solidly standardized by base of design for doing what is very good general practice right now, right? You would never put a geothermal on this kind of a small project. You have to have a certain critical mass, no pun intended, of doing a geothermal field, you'd have to put every building here, plus the church, plus the school on geothermal to make it pay off. So if the town wants to make this as it moves forward into a exemplary project in energy consumption, which we're all for that, it would have a major, I've gotta be honest with you, one thing I told the TCBC and the Select Board, we'll tell the truth, it would have a major impact on the budget, right, to go that level.
Right. So, a question with respect to, you know, you're talking, you just mentioned it before, what's the process you would build a municipal building first? Can you continue?
Right, so what would happen there would be, we actually talked about it upstairs in the town hall a while back, back in September, I think the weather was still nice then. So what would happen is, we would have to, let's, can we put the site plan out, because that, that kinda shows it best. I mean, the junior site plan, but not, not the sexy one that follows it. So, we'd have to, enabled to do some of the stuff that we're doing minimally initially, we'd have to move the historical society building, and if you're gonna have a mover on site, a building mover, you wanna move the annex as well, okay? It would be kinda crazy to move one building and come back like eight months later and pay the same company to come all the way back immobilized, again, to do that. You could do it, but it wouldn't be cost-effective. We would then, well, the idea was to do the new construction at the same time, because the same trades, excavation, concrete, carpentry, all electricians, all of them. So the idea would be to, to basically build a new building, build a library addition, right? Not break through the wall yet, you know? Okay. And, not break through the wall yet, and then move Julie and our staff and the plant, the, the planning folks over to the new building. You could leave the annex in place here while that building was going on, so they don't have to move anywhere, so you could do that. That's something to look at, okay? Once you moved everybody out, and once this addition is being, is built, then you would, you would move the library temporarily over as best you could, okay? Because the floor, first floor of this library, it's a single-story addition, is bigger than a current library. It's about a thousand foot bigger, right, roughly. And then you come in and renovate this library, and if you were, say, we've got the money, and you got the funds, you could theoretically, at the same time you do this, could, you know, do renovations to the town hall, or the town hall could be done much later as money comes in, like Scott was saying. So that's the idea, okay? The idea is not to have the same contract subs come over back a hundred times over, because that's the efficiency, because the one thing we don't have working for us on this project is the economy of scale. These are modest small buildings, right? And that's not a wrong thing to say, that's what they are. So, the way, the way you can get the best money for the dollar is try to combine those in the other.
Another question. Where would the septic field go?
So, this is just a conceptual, you know, design, but there's a system, there's a cistern here, there's a septic field here for disposal area, and then he shows conceptual layouts for water coming in and all of that stuff. Again, quite frankly, I've been doing this for thirty-eight years, and I've done twelve municipal projects in New Hampshire in the last three years, this is probably the most detailed conceptual engineering plan I ever saw. I just finished doing it in Belmont, Wolfboro, Keene, and this is pretty detailed, but there were a lot of things to consider, and I wanna assure the audience that's here that an incredible amount of thought went into how these buildings would be located on the site. You know, the site looks really big right now, when you start looking at the cemetery, the, 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 the setback for the, for the wetlands, when you look at the fact that you might wanna connect maybe to this in the future, that a church may be, the fact that you wanna provide this connection, which is critical to Wesne Hill Road, before you know it, that site gets eaten up pretty good, and we were requested to leave as much of the back of the site open for future use as possible. So there's a lot of moving pieces to the site plan, conceptual site plan.
Yes, conceptual. Right. The other thing is, we've passed it by the two chiefs, and also the highway supervisor in terms of first snow rule and things like that, from the fire chief in terms of, that's how we got the cistern down close to the road, and he's been trying to get a cistern on the hill for a while, and this would be a cistern that they could use, so that's why it's close to the roads and try, fire truck to pull up, fill up his tank, and then go to the particular fire. And we also consulted with the police chief in terms of security for these buildings. That's one of the concerns that we had in terms of municipal building that the public, not that we don't trust you, is kept away from the employees, because other towns have had issues, not that you will all have issues with us, but that's part of the security plan. It's kind, same kinda thing that the Massey School is doing, that new addition that's on the front, the same kinda concept, that you have to be buzzed in and have to be checked out.
Any more questions?
I want to comment, I, I do agree with you, I do like the way this layout is probably better than the little hogward building, so yes, I think this is a bit of a sellable product.
It really, it really does, and, and don't make, I mean, I don't wanna oversimplify, because, I mean, I gotta tell you, I worked at Kim, and Selma's done, and myself, and others who worked on this, I mean, those of you who were at the meeting of the TCBC a week ago on Monday, that was six, seven days ago. So we've come a long way, because we know we have the deadline to get ready for the January meetings, and we're gonna be, just polishing the apple with the next week and a half, and then working with the TCBC on the PowerPoint deck, as to what they wanna present, a couple things that we'll probably put in there, is a couple pictures of the existing buildings, things like that, to, because we assume, of course, everybody lives in town, so you know what your buildings look like, but it's really nice to see them on the screen, I think, when you're looking compared to the new stuff. Thank you, thank you very much, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have one more question.
Yeah, great.
As far as, you were talking about moving the two buildings that needed to be moved first. In your experience, how much time does that take? Because in theory, we have a building inspector who's working, and would have nowhere to move to in that time, so you would take that building, you move it, rehook everything up, they would be able to use it, how much time would they be out of it?
Well, I mean, I, I think that, I think that, originally, my thinking was, so that's a great question, originally, my thinking was that you're gonna hire a company to move these buildings, you want them to come once and move them.
Right.
On the other hand, the municipal building has to be fully constructed before everybody who's in town hall and the annex can move in there.
Right.
The town hall does not have any room to put planning and zoning in there, it's pretty much the rafters right now.
Right.
So, realistically, the building would have to remain in place, that annex, until the new building's built, and then it would be moved after that.
So how long, if you were just moving it onto a slab, how much time would it take to move it?
Oh, I mean, probably somewhere under, probably two to three weeks to do that, because what you'd have to do first is you'd have to pour the foundation in the slab and put the utilities to it, and then base, and then the other, then it would basically come in and jack the building up and move it, and then put it down, and hopefully the building doesn't, you know, fall apart, and, and then you reconnect it, you know, you do everything, reconnections to it.
So that would make sense to do possibly those two, if they could live with being in transition for three weeks or, or a month?
Yeah, a month, something like that.
I just wanted the number so we knew what that was, or...
Yeah, it's probably about a month worth of, worth of work. The thing, the thing that you wanna avoid, though, and this is the, sort of magic trick here, again, is you don't wanna have the people doing the earthwork, doing the excavation, doing the foundation work, doing the concrete work, doing the underground work, coming back literally five times, because every time they come, well, they're gonna come back a few times, but every time they come back, it's gonna cost you money, not money. So the idea of doing the foundation for this world society, the foundation, the slab for the annex, and the foundations, you know, for the municipal building and the library addition, should all be done at the same time, you know?
They could do three of them, the library, you still have to move, you would have to move the historical society before that foundation was built.
Yes.
So that's the one that would be...
But they're, but they would come on site to do that work, that's another great question, that's the best questions. When you, they're gonna come on site, and they'll be on site for a couple of weeks to do that work.
Right.
And so I think, again, I'm not a... And so I think, again, I'm not a construction manager, but I've been doing this for a long time, and I don't want to play one on TV either, but realistically, you probably would do the annex slab, foundation slab, and the basement for the historical society first, because it's, the concrete's got a cure, you can't just pour it, and the next day stop and lap a building on it, even though I know it's been done, and those people already got sued for doing that, but you'd have to let the cure and all that. So, to do the excavation, even for something, if you guys have seen, like, the municipal building is almost the size of a big house, is what it is, a one-story, five-thousand-foot house. When you've seen houses being built, it takes probably about a month, right, about a month-ish to do all that excavation, digging, forming, pouring, backfilling, gravel, takes about a month. So that's the way you'd probably do it.
I was just with the difference, in my experience with moving a building, the people had to get rid of some slates, so, and it was like four months.
Four months, no.
So, so I was just curious what you were thinking.
I mean, those buildings are small enough that myself and four strong men can move that, or women can move those buildings. I mean, the issue is, the issue is moving them kindly, because they're older buildings, and...
Well, at least it's coming up the road and down the street and around the corner.
Yeah.
You're just going to have to APM help them.
The, going forward, this is the presentation that LaValle Breisinger did to the select board, that was part of their contract. There are other presentations coming up, and there's going to be a postcard being sent out about those. The next one is January seventh at six-thirty in this building. It's going to be the presentation of the plan by the Town Center Vision Committee, and the bond hearing that's associated with that, that's the funding part of it. The TCBC is going to give another presentation on January twenty-ninth at seven PM, right here in this particular building. That's right before the deliberative session, deliberative session is February second at nine AM, right in the early. And we're going to do another public presentation on March sixth at seven PM in this building, which is going to be kind of the week before the vote, which is March twelfth. So that postcard is going out, so if you want to attend more presentations, put that in your refrigerator, and come and have some fun.
Thank you very much, and it's been a pleasure so far working with everybody, and there's been a lot of hard work coming from the crowd.
Looks good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, for the TCBC, on Wednesday, we did some presentations on Wednesday evening, and we had three people that did not get their flags, so I would like to go ahead and do that. Can I? This is for all your hard work, which is continuing, I see.
Well, stop, I guarantee you.
John? Mr. Kaplan.
Don't trip on the yellow cord, please.
Ben James.
Here. Thank you very much.
What a slide. I appreciate all the hard work the TCBC has been doing, but you do recognize that it's been many hours working with the architects and other groups and features. Thank you very much. But we expect you to continue on the panel, and in future hours and opportunities, this thing, I'm joking.
Will you take the flags back?
Don't take them out of the plastic. Thank you very much.
So I want to move to enter into non-public session, pursuant to NHRS A-91, Mike, I'm eight-three. Got a second? I got a second?
What that looks like, whether, how reasonable that is to... I'm, I'm, all I'm saying is, it's, it's an option, you can either go back or go to the survey.
The supplement.
The supplement.
The supplement, I'm sorry.
Thanks, John.
I was stuck with that.
Thank you very much. Roll call the vote, yes.
Yes.
Seligman Brown, yes.
Motion carries.
I'll be going here.
So does that mean you're not going to talk about what was in there?
No, we're not going to talk about it.
Uh-oh.
If I do want to talk, now we don't want to talk about it.
So what was the reason for the private meeting?
Personnel. Personnel.
Just a motion to accept, please.
Okay, I make a motion to accept sweatboard meeting minutes from November nineteenth. Can I get a second? Have you seen these? I think...
Yeah, there's two in there.
They're all, because they're not numbered, so...
Oh, they're not numbered, okay.
Can I get a second? Any discussion? You all in favor? I... Passed. That's accepted.
Are you meeting on Wednesday?
Yeah, absolutely, Wednesday, what time? I already signed these.
And did you? Oh, yeah, you did.
No, I didn't sign them. What did I sign?
I don't know what you signed.
The one that started us November Wednesday? Do you get it sealed?
Oh, okay. That one I signed, so, so I signed both those with it. So look at this. Do we have other business? No other business? No. Could the chairman entertain other business? Could the chairman entertain other business? I just, are you okay with this?
Yes. Yes, I am, it looks very nice.
Okay.
Ready to go. And it dates of, check, checked, and checked.
Checked, and checked, and checked.
Okay, good.
Okay? That's the only thing, I just want to make sure.
John, any questions? Okay, I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Look here, who's anxious to...
That was quick.
All right, thank you.
So Wednesday at...